يا الناس، لقد خلقناكم من الذكر والأنثى وجعلناكم شعوبًا وقبائلًا لتعرفوا. يا أصدقاء، بالفعل خلقناكم من الرجال وجنسية وجعلناكم بلادًا وجنودًا حتى تعرفون بعضهم البعض. أعتقد أن هذه المقابلة، هذا المقدمة، هي عكس جميل للغاية لهذا العدد. نحن جميعًا هنا، الرجال وجنساء. جميعًا أتينا لأننا نفهم دورنا في هذا الحياة وكيف علينا أن نقدم الطريق للgenerations القادمة. يتطلب بني، يتطلب بني، يعني أننا نحتاج إلى البدء من童年 مع تطوير الفتيات والمرأة في عائلتنا، الأطراف الاجتماعية الأكثر أهمية، ثم التوازن مع المدارس والمنصات الوظيفة. أسمي زينا طبعة، وأنا مهتم بعلمية. تجربتي في التغييرات التعليمية في جوردن. ومن هذه التجربة تعلمت أن المدارس للفتيات في جوردن لديها مشكلة لأن لدينا افتراض من المدراء الرجال. هذا عكس آخر للمسفينة الجنسية هنا اليوم. كان هناك مؤسسة يمكننا، بعض المدارس تحصل على المساعدة من المدراء النساء والرئيسات لتعزيز المدارس الفتيات. مرة أخرى، ربما نحتاج إلى إعادة التغيير في الطريقة التي نقوم بها ب way تطوير فتياتنا والمرأة للاختيارات المختلفة التي她们 يجب أن تتحملها في الحياة.
Okay, it's not good morning anymore, I think. It's good afternoon. I'm Maryam Dejani. I'm a pharmacist. I'm a businesswoman and entrepreneur. I'm gonna talk about like, I'll take you to a different place, actually. I told you as a pharmacist, in Jordan, as a start, pharmacists as women in the graduate level, there are more than 70%, actually. Okay, then in the workforce, they are around 40%, which is a good percentage. But in the decision-making positions and in the distribution of the money capital in the business, they're like less than 8%. So sometimes numbers are misleading. We're all the time pushing for numbers, looking for numbers as a measurement, as an indicator, to know where we're going, but sometimes numbers are not the right thing to look at. We should look at something else, which would help us in a better way, which is the environment. If the environment is really women-friendly, that it will give women and men at the same time, and equal opportunities. And I would talk about more fair opportunities than an equal, because equal, equality term sometimes is another time misleading. So, I told you that less than 8% of the pharmacist women in Jordan are decision-makers. As an example, in the Jordanian Pharmacist Association, the council, they're like 11, one of them is woman. And basically, if we knew that all of their meetings are after 7:30 PM, you would know why. So changing a very small thing, putting the meeting earlier, you could push more women to be in that council. See, this is a very minimal effort, but it could make a very big change. At another level, for example, I was a chairman of a committee of business development and marketing at the association, the pharmacy association in Jordan. The thing is that in most of the activities they do, they, at the same time, putting meetings, activities very late, the second thing, they don't care about the child, the children of the women with a very high population. So, we provided childcare. So, childcare within earlier meetings. The number of participants as women, they increased like 100% with the very minimal efforts. So each one of us, in every place, in every position, they can do really a lot. And that would take me to another thing. I told you I'm a businesswoman. I have my own company. And the thing is, I have lots of girls and females in the company. As I told you, as a decision-maker, you can change a lot. For example, I'll give an example. One of the girls in the company, when she had her menstruation period, she got really tired, which is biologically, it is, it's there. So we usually give her a minister will leave. And that took me to make a research about the minister will leave all around the world. And I found something really, I didn't know about it, which is that Asian countries, South Korea, China, Indonesia, and even Japan, they give by legislation. And in company practices, a minister will leave. That means 12 days a year, paid or unpaid, for women. But at the same time, when you go to the West, feminism acts, they go against that because they consider it as women confirming that they are weaker. You can see how it's so different, looking at the same thing, was that biologically we're different. So that will lead me to the last thing I'm gonna talk about, which is the third thing we're preparing now in Jordan, which is, we're preparing for an index that would help the private sector, or the governmental, or whatever, any institution, to help them put like checklist, not to like do trial and error forever. Mark talked about his experience, Frando's, he talked about the UN experience. So why just going through trial and error, everyone by themselves? So we're trying to put like a checklist, a global checklist, to help institutions, companies, whatever, to make their environments more women-friendly, in order to help women, if they have the ambitious, if they're really qualified, to go through all of the path and be at the top. Thank you.
So, the multidisciplinary is also going through levels, reflecting all the colors of our world. And so now I will call my colleague Amina, who is also from the humanities.
Salaam alaikum. Hello, everyone. So, my name is Amina. I have a PhD in higher education, administration, and leadership. So when I told my department head that I'm gonna be a speaker here, she told me, seriously, what you're gonna do there? There are people who are gonna talk about physics, chemistry, medicine, all that stuff. She said, what are you gonna do at our science forum? And I said, you know, humanities are also sciences, and we need to be there. And I thank, you know, Rana and the organizer for giving me this opportunity to be here. So, I have a minor in women's studies. And as I start to do research and think about researcher process, and how we as academic are a producer of knowledge in the academy through research, that, you know, research is not value-free, and research is not neutral. And we as a researcher, we bring who we are to the research. And most of the mainstream research, or the dominant research in the academy, is the research that has been done for a while by men, not by women. Also, some of the research, as Dr. Rana shared with us in the morning, that most of the research has, you know, neglected the women to some extent. So what can we do as a critical feminist scholar with our scientists, with our natural sciences, is how can we utilize the critical feminist tool and help them in order to deconstruct the reality of the research participant that they do research with? To help them understand the reality of the participant. Because in natural sciences, most of the research, or sometimes in the natural sciences, they call them research subjects. We as a critical feminists, we challenge this idea, and we say they are research participant. Their voices need to be brought up to the research, and they need to be participant in the researcher process and research results. They need to speak their voices, their agency. Why? Because many people have been in the margin of the research. Many people have been invisible. And we, and I speak myself as an Arabiya Muslima researcher, we have been invisible in the research because other people have been doing research in us. So when I come to the research, and we do research about our country and our region, we need to come to know what's our reality, and we need to deconstruct our reality in order to bring research participant as change agent within the researcher process, not as distant people who just we do research in them, and then we report back the research results. So as a critical feminist researcher, my role in collaborating with scientists is to bring the voice of research participant, help them use the critical feminist tool research box, in order to empower, in order to influence and change. Because at the end of the day, research is power. And we can, through research, power and empower and influence our society and the whole wide world in general. Thank you so much.
Okay, now let's zoom out, okay? And invite Maurice, who will share with us the perspective from the SDGs.
Good afternoon. My name is Maurice Guimont. I am the SDG advisor at UN Women Regional Office in Cairo. Has everyone heard of the SDGs? The Agenda 2030? Taban? Okay. As you know, in September 2015, 193 member states met in New York and committed to the 2030 Agenda and the Sustainable Development Goals. It includes all the countries of this region. The Agenda balances economic, social, and environmental sustainability. It recognizes very key principles. One, human rights. Two, accountability. Three, the principle of reinforcing capacities of everyone. And lastly, leaving no one behind. Men, women, boys, or girls. Now, UN Women and many other actors around the world, learning from what had happened during the MDGs. Everyone has heard of the MDGs, that what was before the SDGs. We had realized that looking at gender equality and women's empowerment, and looking at only one dimension, we would not reach as far as we could. For example, during the MDGs, we, most of the work was done on increasing girls' and women's education, which in this region, actually, increased quite significantly in some countries. However, it did not translate to other significant changes. For example, we did not see a greater number of women in political spheres or economic spheres. So that was one of the learning. So we realized that in moving forward, we needed to recognize the fact that there are multi-dimensional aspects that need to be tackled. So, we struggled, or fought, to ensure that there would be a standalone goal on gender equality and women's empowerment, as well as ensuring that it would be cross-cutting. So all of the goals, there are 17, have gender equality and women's empowerment. And I think it's very important that we make a difference between women's empowerment and gender equality. Gender is not women. It is about women and men. Women's empowerment is about the empowerment of women. Gender is about looking at concerns, priorities, interests of both men and women, and making sure that they benefit from sustainable development or other policies. So it's very important, I think, that we're clear with the terms that we used. Now, it was very important, we felt, that we move forward and ensure that the Agenda would address these issues. This is the developmental pathway for the next 15 years. It is what all actors have committed to. One also lesson that we've learned from past experiences was the fact that it cannot be done by one group alone. It's not just the government. It includes civil society. It includes private sectors. It includes scientists, academics. It includes everyone. Women, young people, and so on. And it's very important that we take it on. When, for example, I see that there are many people from Jordan or from other parts of this region, when your governments went to New York and committed to this agenda, it is a global agenda, but the understanding was, they would come back to their country and see what does it mean in Jordan? What does it mean in Lebanon, or Palestine, and so on? If I go back to gender equality and women's empowerment, the reason why we're here today. It was also recognized inside this agenda that there is no way that we will reach sustainable development if we do not address gender equality and women's empowerment. You cannot grow as a planet if half of your population is marginalized. There's no way. So it was very important that we look into this. There's another concept I spoke, or principle that I spoke earlier, which was the leaving no one behind. We often speak of women, or we speak of men, as we're all the same. We're not. There are other elements that enter into it. There are other forms of discrimination also. Earlier, we had Mr. Ahmed saying that youth are not being represented, but they are 60% of the population of this region. So we need to not just talk about men and women, we need to be a bit more precise and look at the diversity that the region has. So it's very important, I think, that in the gender summit, that we pay attention to that. How representative are we inside the groups? In moving forward, the Commission on the Status of Women, which meets every year in New York, and all of your countries attend them, from governments and civil society and other actors, in 2016 identified five key areas of work to ensure that the 2030 Agenda would be gender-responsive, which means that the Agenda would effectively move on gender equality and women's empowerment. The five level are, looking at the norms and practices, and I think many of you have spoken, of looking into how we behave, how we move forward, the norms, how we are teaching our children. Because change is not something that happens only outside. It starts from the home, how we behave. So it is one of the things we've been looking at. Looking at legal frameworks, discriminatory laws, how many in this region, in these countries, how many laws are gender-equitable, paying attention to both men and women with equal rights. We're looking also at data. One of the major problems that we're facing is the lack of data, and specifically on gender and sex that's aggregated data. 80% is currently missing, so it's very important that we catch up to it. We need to know more. We need to be more precise in the way we proceed. Also ensuring that there's financing. Gender equality in the MDG was one of the least financed gold. So we need to ensure that the money is there. No money, no action. Earlier, someone was saying, you know, how do we track that we're spending for women and men? One of the targets inside the goal on gender equality is effectively on this. If you're speaking about sound policies, you need to make sure that they are affecting women, and men, and boys, and girls. So it's very important to look at financing. I'm going, and I know it's the end. So I think it's very important to go back and look at these resources as you move forward. The CSW 60 session is very accessible. There are very clear recommendations for different groups of actors that you might want to take on, and I think might be useful. That is it. I know I'm the last one, so, yeah. Thank you very much.
I'd like to thank the third panel, and I think, and I'm being really honest, I think this was the most exciting one. And I hope you agree. Because it's diverse, it's represented everybody and everything. So now we're going to call for the final closing. So I'd like to invite, before we move, I'd like to thank our panelists and give them a round of applause. And if anybody wants to ask them questions, we end at one. So bear with us another 10 minutes, just to wrap up and to conclude, and give recommendations and lessons going forward. And later on, you can talk to these wonderful panelists outside when we're done. There's a whole lunch, so you can enjoy that. So I'd like to call to the table Mrs. Nasrin Barakat, Mrs. Mikyor, and Elizabeth, so that we could do the final remarks.
Thank you. You have a presentation, right? Who's in charge of the technology? You have a presentation, right? Yes. Can somebody from tech help us turn this on? Turned off. If it's here, all right? You don't need a presentation? Oh, she doesn't. All right, so I'd like, please, then, you can take the mic.
Thank you very much. I am Yoko Ottenabe, Chair of Gender Summit in Tokyo in May this year. I would like to appreciate all of the people who planned and prepared this wonderful mini gender summit over here. Yeah, it was very wonderful. Yeah. And especially, yeah. And especially, Rana and Elizabeth worked very hard to prepare this gender summit. Thank you very much. And Royal Scientific Society Jordan supported this gender summit. It was wonderful. Yeah, I came to Jordan for the first time, and I could find there are so many active and positive women in Jordan and Arab world. I was surprised. Yeah, they are wonderful. Yeah, and, yeah, I could, I also found the similar issues over here to in Asia. And of course, we have a lot of common issue in the world. So it is valuable for us to collaborate in promoting gender equality in science and technology. So you are the colleagues of Gender Summit Societies. Today, I would like to give our trophy. So this means you are expected to promoting gender equality in science and technology together with us. So I will give you, yeah, this trophy.
Thank you very much. And I'm receiving this on behalf of all the women in Jordan, the Arab world, and everyone who wants to support this, and I think on behalf of all the gender summits in the world, and on behalf of Elizabeth and everyone. And this holds, this comes with huge conditions. It's like, do we really want to take this on? But I think we do, right? All together, to make a difference going forward. So we are worthy of this award. Thank you.
I'm sure our collaboration will open the door to make a new, wonderful, and bright future in the world. Thank you very much.
So now that we want to wrap up, I would like to invite Nasrin Barakat to give us her input. What are the lessons learned? What are the recommendations that you would like to set forth in like one or two minutes?
Actually, and sincerely, it was really very inspiring morning. And a lot of what we have heard today, it was a striking and eye-opener for me, and for us as a region, and Jordan as a country. And I think if we are in the preparation of a summit for the Arab world, I agree with Rana, we need to look at the specific issues regarding our country, but at the same time, look at the global issues, and the checklist that Maryam talked about, where we don't need to reinvent, but rather employ what we have to the best of what we can do. And as I was hearing the different speakers, the panelists, they were all very impressive. I was just writing and drawing circles around so many issues I would like to share with you quickly. The issue that we need to start from home, so it's not about leave home and go outside, it's actually start from home. This is how the change happened. The definition of gender, which our colleague just mentioned to us, it's about men and women together, to the best of the world. And this has to be really clear, because I think in our region, if we look at the specific issue, we do have a fear of the word gender. It is a problem for us. So let's define things and put it in the right context in order to be able to move correct and forward. Evidence, research is a power, and I agree. And the more evidence we get, and we are able to participate in, and that's a very important message, don't leave the space open. Just be part of it. If you want a change, be part of it. If you want to be, to see anything different, be part of that change. Involve youth. I agree. And I would add personally, involve elderly. I think we are, over the time, we will be missing that perspective. So it's about gender, true. It's about everybody in this community. So I would say, yes, involve youth. We need youth. There are more than 60% in our region here. Where is their energy that could move our country into peaceful situation, into more of a development? But also, where is the wisdom? And where are the elderly that we need now to involve them in order to have a better world for them in the future? I guess, work with society is a key. This is really a key issue, working with society, because as I said, it starts from home, and then to the society, taking it back into the top level. There are really, really many, many, many things. Looking at networking, collaboration is a key thing. And going back to the human side of everything, I think, I think as we go, the world is getting crazier. Although we have, we are maybe innovating more, maybe reaching technology-wise better, but we are losing on the human side, which is the original side, and which is the value that we will add to this world. So I would invite back our humanity in everything and across everything, where we respect human rights. So when we are talking about gender, it's about respecting the human rights. And this is a very important issue. I'm sorry, I took more than two minutes, but to be honest, if you give me the time, I can go on and on and on, because I was very inspired. Thank you so much for making me part of it. And I really would like to be part of the change agents in the future. Thank you.
Well, so I was responsible for the idea of the gender summit, but I was not alone responsible for it. Martina was a part of this herself, because what happened is, in 2010, we had a panel of science leaders, we presented evidence to them. There are people who didn't talk about gender, yes, but they were expert in their own fields. So we put that evidence at front of them and said, you decide whether it matters for science. We know it matters for women, and women know it matters to them, but what does it mean to science? And after three months of a heavy discussion and so on, they came up with a really interesting idea that nobody up till then has actually identified. They looked at all the empirical evidence, and they said, whoa, there's a lot of studies that don't say whether the subjects were male or female, and when they do, they usually say male. So science has got much more evidence for males than for females, and this means that the quality of science is not as good as it is believed, because the outcomes from research are likely to be worse for women. And then you can actually identify lots of evidence that shows that, as we have seen. So that was like a miracle idea, yes? Because once we had this idea, we knew we can persuade scientists. And if we can persuade scientists, so this issue is not part of the human resources department anymore. It is a problem, as you said, for society, for scientists, for women who work, pay taxes for scientists to be in the labs, and so on. And I think that that's why the gender summit became such a successful platform, because it could bring many more people into the room, as we have here. And it means it's our problem, okay? It is our problem. And it's a solvable problem. And when you present it as an opportunity, as Minister Pandor was saying, it adds value, it creates new questions for research, and it creates, as Martina said, new opportunities of how to do innovation. Bring the people from outside. Even if the women have dropped out from the pipeline, they're still there, they still have the knowledge. Bring them in into the science creation process. So we have the knowledge that we need. We need really, really good knowledge now. We have the SDGs. We have people who are offering the Fourth Industrial Revolution. There are all these pushes and pulls, and women have to be part of it, yes? So, and I was really, when this idea of putting gender summit here came up, I thought, well, I have to find who is there in the region, because I didn't know anything about this region. And of course, if you go on Google, you don't find anything, okay? So that is one thing, yes? This region is not represented in the mentality, in the science community mentality, yes? You have to become more visible. So the gender summit would allow you to become more visible. But fortunately, I remember that when I read at some point in Nature magazine, an article, and the woman was called Rana Dejani, okay, Rana Dejani, and there she is. So at least I had an input and entrance. So I really thank Rana.
Thank you. Thank you. Well, first, I'm gonna sum up and then start thanking everybody, because I think everybody's wonderful and great. But I want to comment on what you said. I think we need to write more. I think one of the things that we lack in the Arab world is writing. And writing from every sector has to write. Children have to write. Youth have to write. And adults have to write, and from every sector. And because we need our voice to be heard, not just by the people outside the region, but even from the people inside the region. We don't have enough role models. Of course, I'm coming. How do you start to write? You start to read. Because when you read, you Because when you read, you have vocabulary. You know how to express yourself better because you have the grammar and you have the words. And then you become a nation that has an identity, is proud of themselves, and that can really identify their challenges and develop the solutions, and then go forward as a whole region and as communities. So thank you for bringing that up. That's very, very important. I just want to add a few points to summarize. And I think one of that was said from the panelists all through today. And one of them is that we have to look at the process, not just individual things. We have to look at a holistic view, and look at things as a continuity, a process, not just individual things. Second, we have to look at the environment. It's changing the environment, the mentality, and the approach. And lastly, it's about skill-building and capacity-building, not materialistic stuff. It's how we do things. How we take, we're unbiased because we take training. How we learn how to use a gender lens, and so on. So those are very, very important things, while always being positive, as you said. We have to be positive, we have to be optimistic, and we have to believe. Because when you believe, things will happen. Nothing is impossible. If you believe, it's not impossible. So those, I think, are the take-home messages. And lastly, we don't want to change who we are as women. We want to change all the rules in the game that addresses who we are, and the technology is who we are, so we can work together. So I think that's a very important thing we have to keep in mind. I want to thank Elizabeth. Because she emailed me out of the blue. And we had a Skype call, and this happened. This is a testimonial to how one person can make a difference. Elizabeth is one person, she made a difference. And every one of you is one person. And every one of you has made a difference, or will make a difference. And I hope that going out from here, each one of you has thought of a new idea, something new, a new perspective, a new relationship with someone that they will take forward and make a difference in their life and in the lives around them. So that's very, very important to keep in mind. I also want to thank all the panelists, all the audience for being here and being patient with all the logistics and taking care of things. Everyone who has supported from the Royal Scientific Society, supporting the gender summit, the World Science Forum and supporting it. And all the logistic support. The unnamed soldiers who are working, the technicians, the lighting, the cameras. We thank them all. And lastly, I want to thank her royal highnesses, Princess Tumaya. She's not here. But she has been a staunch supporter of women, of science, of humanity in general. And we really thank her for being our support. And hopefully, with her support and the Royal Scientific Society, we will take the gender summit from a mini-gender summit to a full-fledged gender summit where everybody's voice will be included. Because we know we haven't covered everything. And thank you very much. And I hope you will be with us on this journey together as we go forward. Thank you. And by the way, I'm writing a book about women and success. So thank you for all the material. I'm gonna outright and talk to you all to include you in my book. Thank you.